Evening, everyone. Welcome to this October 1st, 2009 school board meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and begin with the pledge of allegiance. Jordan, would you get it started?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, folks at home who may be watching this evening. I'll continue by reading our mission statement. The Newmarket School District is committed to the highest standards of quality education by creating a safe and successful learning community that embraces diversity in response to the social, emotional, intellectual, and physical needs of every child. We are dedicated to fostering links to the broader community to ensure that students develop lifelong skills, enabling them to be contributing and productive members of society. This is the time of the meeting that we would reserve for public comments, seeing none. We can move directly to the minutes, but before I do, I just will point out that I spoke with Kelly earlier. She's not feeling well and thought it best that she stay home this evening, and Kelly, I hope you're feeling better quickly. So with that, let's move to the minutes from our last meeting, which was just one week ago. So I'll accept the motion regarding the minutes of September 24th.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from September 24th.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Corrections or clarifications? I have none. In hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, and we have non-public as well.
I make a motion to accept the non-public school board minutes from September 24th.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion there? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, and we are moving right along into good news. It's only been a week since we've last heard you on good news.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, since our last meeting, five working days have elapsed, and the good news is I haven't heard any bad news. So that's it for my good news report tonight.
I know it's been very busy in the high school world in particular with Spirit Week and all that, but we'll look forward to hearing something from Jordan not too long. Okay. I know it hasn't been long, but we have opportunity for facilities committee update. Forrest, do you have?
Yeah, very quickly. I just want to recap. Thank you for the opportunity. Recap something I went over, I think, two meetings ago briefly, in that myself and Chet and Mark have had an initial meeting and a planning meeting, and we have sort of committed our action, you know, we put our action plan together for where we're going to go. And in the short term, what we're looking at doing is putting together a small committee with the three of us, representation, asking for representation from the town council, and representation from the budget committee to serve on that with us as well, and two members of the community. And we're going to be having some discussions about who we'd like to invite from the community so that we can, we want to make sure we have, we ensure some diverse input and opinions from those community members as well. So we've had some discussion about that, and we'll continue that. Our next, we're going to meet again on the 13th, and our short-term goal, of course, is to get the committee fully established. And our first task will be to review the results of the community survey that was done about 18 months ago. As people may remember, we had a, we commissioned UNH, the survey department at UNH, to conduct a community survey for us, to give us some, you know, some real data, some, a scientific look at what the community is looking to accomplish regarding the facilities. And so we believe that we have to ground ourselves in that data and really use that to drive our next steps and determine what some of the new, what some of the options may be remaining at this point, that we haven't explored before, that we haven't explored as fully as others, or in fact that we haven't asked for direct community input, you know, via warrant article or something like that. So we'll go through those and probably narrow down. I think we've talked about maybe having two things that we want to look at as a committee, and then re-engaging the professional folks out there that, you know, need to inform us about scope and sequence and things like that. So I'm, I think at this point, we're planning that on or around Jan, you know, January is probably the next time that we want to make a substantive report to, to the full board about, you know, the progress on that. And I will get everybody the copy of the action plan so that the board is aware of what's going on there.
Forrest, Forrest.
Yes.
Yes, I also want to make mention Sue Caswell is a member of that committee as well.
I apologize. Thank you. No, I certainly do apologize.
One thing that's, I would assume it would be available is the folks at the UNH Survey Center, Tracy Fowler and Andy Smith, would more than likely be available to review their view of the data from their impartial place. It's been quite some time. Certainly, you know, I, I feel that it hasn't been so much time that those results don't still have value. But it was Elaine Holt and myself who kind of got that debrief.
Right.
A bit of time ago. So I could, I'm happy to share with, with the group what I've, what I can take, you know, from, from my notes from that point in time, but it might be wise to, to engage those folks to.
Re-explain them again.
Yeah.
Yeah, that probably makes a lot of sense to get everybody together. Thank you for the suggestion.
Okay, is there anything else?
No, I think, Chet, is there anything, anything else?
Fine, yeah, we're going to meet and start setting some goals and some philosophies and whatever we think is going to help the community and the children out.
Meg, any?
No, I just appreciate all your work. Thank you.
Okay, on to committee reports. Mark, do you have a superintendent's report for us this evening?
No, I don't have anything additional. We had since our last.
This has been so quiet.
It has.
Everyone's been busy.
Yeah.
No, it's the grindstone.
We have them.
Okay, Jordan?
This is the fastest we've ever done a board.
All right, good.
Major meeting, I think, tonight.
We're, we're only a week off our last meeting, so. And if you look at the timeline, you know, we could stay on schedule if you were willing to take a good 40 minutes.
Well, I think I agree with Mr. LaRoche. I mean, there hasn't really been much. I mean, it is homecoming week. It has gone very well. A lot of participation from other classes and dress-up days and during and after-school events. Tomorrow, last period of the day, the classes will be performing their lip syncs. They're always really funny, so I encourage anybody that has off to come and watch. And just as a friendly reminder, Prodigy Graduation is putting on a huge game of musical chairs as a fundraiser at 6:30 on the field tomorrow. It's going to be a lot of fun. People are going to be selling food, snacks. So if you want to have a fun time, you have nothing to do, just come down to the fields. After that is the big pep rally. There will be a huge bonfire, and we will be selling snacks and drinks throughout that. This event is welcome to the whole town, and this will be also on the fields. I believe it's on Bee Field, the bonfire is. So if you guys want to come down and just wear red, because we're just trying to bring back the whole color of the school. Then on Saturday are the homecoming soccer games. The girls' game is at 11:00 and the boys' game is at 1:00. Please come and support our teams, and don't forget to wear something that represents Newmarket or something red or black. And then with the sports as an update, we had a game today, and I just got in contact with my captains, and they said we won. So our record is eight and one. We're still in first place, so that's good. The girls' soccer is five and three. Football's oh and three. Then cross-country has their next meet tomorrow at 4:00, so that's going to be fun to watch, because I always like watching.
And that's a home.
Yes, home. Yep. But that's all I have.
Okay.
Now that I've woken up here and the superintendent's report, I would like to thank those that participated in the Heritage Festival. I saw parents, volunteers, representing the PTA, other school organizations, students, and very proud of your participation.
Thank you.
And what you've done. It's good for Newmarket, and the schools benefit by all of your efforts. So thank you for all the participants. It was a pleasure to attend.
It was a good event. On the subject of thank yous, I'd just like to throw out hats off to the staff in the junior, senior high school. I know that there've been a few individuals that have been there very early in the morning, and they're probably now making the school available for students that are practicing for tomorrow's.
Yeah, for the lip syncs, yeah.
That's, it's great that we've got folks that are happy to do those things. Okay. Excellent. So we've got a couple things to talk about. We wanted some, to do some follow-up on Bob's presentation as well as.
Yeah, I did hear from Bob Coffey about his proposal. He assured me that the cost to, the electrical cost for the two boiler retrofits wouldn't be more than $1,000, and he would be sure that if it was more than that, that they would absorb that cost. So he assured me that that's the fee that we could go with, add that to his estimate last week. If you still have that, I have a copy. If you don't, and.
What was the total numbers?
Well, it would depend, again, on the assumed savings. We had a 5% assumed or a 10%. So the cost would either be, actually, the cost was the same. It was the payback that was a little different. So it would be around, I don't think, yeah, he did include the installation, about $8,881 for both units. That would be both the Fitch and the Frigitech units, the oil burner and the freezer units.
So the oven stall piece, is that for both?
Those, yeah, those units that they would put, yeah.
Both the Frigitech and the Fitch unit?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, he does have it in there. It's underneath Frigitech. Oh, yes, the only piece would be our own boiler person to make some little adjustments, but I don't anticipate that that would be huge. To, you see that up on the Fitch, it does say installation, and that's something that he, remember, he mentioned he liked to have our own boiler people come in and make that little adjustment for when they adjust the oil. And that, that isn't usually a huge expense.
Okay, any questions regarding? These items? So essentially, we will pay for, for this basically out of our utility line items?
We could. We also have in both buildings, we have boiler maintenance, so we could do that for the boiler piece, boiler repairs, either, either or. We have a maintenance account in both the high school and the elementary school for all of our various machinery in the actual maintenance account, not in the, in the school-related instructional accounts.
Okay, would you, I guess it would probably be prudent to have a motion on this?
I would think so.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to, to proceed with the installation of these technologies?
Now, is it going to be the Fitch, which is going to be at the high school level? One is going to be placed there, Sue?
Um, I believe, it's at both.
But one at the high school?
Right, one at each, yes.
And then one at the elementary school?
One at each, yes.
Okay. So the motion could be stated as, give, sue the authority to, or mark the authority to proceed with this installation of the Fitch? That's what we want?
It would actually be both.
It would be both if, if that's what you're choosing.
Both units.
The Frigitech, is that what they call it? The Frigitech and the Fitch?
Yes.
All right. So how you want the motion stated? The fact that letting Mark proceed with it?
You might consider a motion to approve these at an amount not to exceed.
All right.
That way you have a, you have an expenditure amount to go along with your motion.
What would be the, the maximum on that, Sue?
Well, according to the sheet that I just gave you, it was $8,881 for their services.
$8,881?
Yes, that's what this, so.
So if we, if we put it as not to exceed $9,000?
That's fair.
All right.
Well, that does not include the $1,000 install piece.
It does. Actually, if you look up, underneath, I noticed it is tucked in there under Frigitech, and then it, do you see that?
Yep.
It's in there.
Okay.
The only piece it doesn't include is our boiler maintenance people. It would just be a basic service call for them to come in.
Well, you can do the maintenance anyways.
Right, exactly.
Well, I make a motion to, to allow Mr. LaRoche and Mrs. Caswell to proceed with the installation of the Fitch and the Frigitech to be attached to the boilers of the high school and also the elementary school, but not to exceed a price of $9,000.
I'll second.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Great.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, might a, might a two-minute summary of this be helpful if people weren't watching the last board meeting, so that they're hearing Frigitech and Fitch, and that doesn't mean anything if they weren't, didn't happen to catch the last one. We were presented a, Bob Coffey, a local resident who's done a lot of work both in our schools and in our community, presented us with an opportunity to install a device on our boilers in the buildings that will make the fuel more efficient in its use. I certainly am not qualified to go into the technical nature of how it does that, but they are, they are devices. They look like a large fuel filter, but they, it's not a filtering device. It's more of a congealing device. And by doing so, we will reduce our fuel consumption, fuel oil consumption for burning the boilers. And at this point, it looks as if the payback period on these is somewhere within the first year, so that the amount of savings, depending on the level of savings that comes in, these devices will have paid for themselves within the first 12 months or less. And then after that, we are, we're realizing savings to the budget free and clear of the cost of the devices. So these are, you know, it's a, it's a good step to do. We're always trying to do things to control the bottom line of the budget, to keep things as level as possible. And as we know, even though we might be in a temporary drop in fuel prices, the long-term trend is probably going to inevitably rise again. So anything we can do to minimize our consumption is helpful.
Thanks, Forrest. It was a good idea to.
Yes.
To remind folks who may have missed prior rebroadcast or what have you. Okay, you, we've got a transportation piece as well?
Yeah, we do. We're in our last year of our contract with First Student, First Student Transportation Services. We have a call-in. Sue and I today attempted to reach the regional manager to pose the question, shall we do an extension, one year? If so, what type of extension increase will be available? Or are we looking at as a possibility renegotiating the contract for multiple years? And there's pros and cons to each. So we're waiting for Mr. Anderson to call back, and we'll have some further information for you on that topic.
Great.
It's interesting, too, as an aside, there used to be a little competition in that area. Well, First Student now merged with Laylaw, so it's pretty interesting.
There aren't many players out there, unfortunately, so.
Is that the same company that shels our students to the SSD?
Yes.
SSD?
Yes.
Pretty much all public busing is either that company or an individual district's own bus fleet, is that, does that describe it well?
There's a few others out there, but most of them, one that comes to mind is Goffstown Trucking and Bussing, and that's, yeah, and that's.
They do a lot of them.
Yep, they do.
Hudson Bus. I don't care, Hudson.
There's a Dial or Dale Transportation out there, but I think they are very small.
Yeah, they're very.
They may be isolated to a sing, they may actually be isolated to a single district, but I think they're more up in the Stratford County area than they are down here in the Seacoast. At least that's where I think I see the buses wandering around when you see the name on the side.
Well, frankly, from the standpoint of what I've been able to observe over the last year, I've been very satisfied with their services. Doing a good job.
Good. Okay, do we have any resignations or other personnel status changes?
We do not.
Not ready for that. Any nominations?
None.
We are fully staffed?
Yes, thank goodness.
Terrific. Okay, remarkably, we are already into the manifest for this meeting.
Make a motion that we approve the manifest as presented and signed by the board in the amount of $342,456.91.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, calendar. I've got one item that I suppose could be construed as a calendar item, which, which, regarding the New Hampshire School Boards Association, there is a meeting, it's a education law conference is coming up. I haven't inquired if there's still space available. I wouldn't be surprised, though, if there were, if anyone's interested. I do have a flyer here. It's October the 7th in the afternoon.
It's usually a full house. Yeah, usually full. I'll be attending.
Oh, good. And while talking about the School Boards Association, their delegate assembly is, I want to say, January the 11th, and they have a, I've mentioned, I think I sent out an email reminder earlier in the week regarding a, a call for resolutions. What they do is they put together a platform essentially of items that they are interested, or that their constituents are interested in supporting, using that organization to, to help push at the legislature or the Department of Education, whomever is most appropriate. So the deadline for that call for resolutions is right around the end of this month. We, there's, we have another meeting before then, but I was curious if anyone had any ideas to add to that potentially. We have, and we've talked about this a little bit, but we have, many years back, proposed a resolution involving our concern for the, the cost of public, public, not, not public, health insurance, and how that impacts our budget. And that ended up getting written very deep into their resolutions. But one thing that's been on my mind a little bit of late, which they do address in some of their, their planks, I guess, in the platform in the past, is concern about the timeliness of the scoring of the standardized testing, I guess, is, is my axe to grind. It's the, it's a large burden, taking away student time from learning to be tested, and I think next week actually is.
Well, today.
Today.
Started today.
Yes.
And, well, the, when will be, under the current, well, when did we last have these tests done? Was it, is it in the spring?
Yes, for science.
It's spring. The other, the core areas are, are this time of year.
We'll have those scores available and a report ready sometime, probably in January for you.
For the science?
No, for, for everything, everything. Yes.
Well, that's better than.
They're getting better.
Than what it had been. For the, the science tests they took this past spring, I understand we've got some preliminary data.
We do.
But that was taken in the fall, in the spring.
Yes.
So we've missed an opportunity for our science teachers to have, incorporate what could be learned from those tests into the curriculum, which is a real shame, and that's kind of the angle at that. So just kind of as food for thought, I've drafted a, a potential resolution to consider, and we don't need to discuss it further than this now, but it's very draft, and if you'd like to, we could maybe talk about it at the next meeting if, if folks feel that it might have merit.
Well, the whole issue of high-stakes testing certainly is a volatile emotional issue, and there are many cost, time issues associated with the administration of those tests. And again, the whole issue of NCLB, what expectations are, and what human costs, what opportunity costs are associated with that test. But it is here. It is not going away, and certainly it's important to have our ever-present concerns advanced to various legislative bodies through the vehicles that you have available to you. But as we look at that data and analyze that data, I've talked with principals, have spoken to principals and the curriculum coordinator, and I think it would be useful to have staff present, department chairs, and other representative from the departments to discuss results, plans, directions that departments, that buildings will be taking when we do that overview for the board. So I think it's, it's critical that you have the opportunity to hear that from those that are in the field and working with our kids.
Great. That makes a lot of sense. Okay, that, I guess, was my calendar side, sidebar, but we are now into the world of seeing each other, the minimum of once a week. Budget work session a week from tonight at the elementary school at 6:30. So I look forward to that.
I did ask Scott, too, about perhaps if anyone wishes to have a tour to do that at 6:00, so if anyone, and I will notify the budget committee that that will be available if they want to do a tour of the facility.
That, I think, has proved very valuable in the past.
Yes.
It's great to get the understanding of space needs of occupational therapy through, through the whole gamut.
I'd also make a comment that we, we do do these budget work sessions in the building that we are considering that night for the purposes of the tour and making the budget committee familiar with the facility and what we offer there. And as such, then these sessions, they're not typically televised anyway, but they, because in their remote locations, they cannot be televised live. The public is invited to attend these meetings. They're, they're open meetings, and we welcome them to attend. It is not, there will not be opportunity for public input at these meetings. These meetings are for communication between the budget committee and the budget makers and, and the board. The board and the budget committee and the budget makers, we listen to the presentations, and we ask questions. We want some clarification, but I certainly encourage anyone who wishes to observe to, to be there and come take the tours or, and participate in that manner. And that's for all of these that I have a feeling that Cliff's about to go over, so.
We have a, so our next board meeting is, is on the 15th. We're back on the first and third Thursday schedule. And I guess the only other thing I wanted to re-highlight would be that the place to be in town tomorrow evening would be at Bee Field for the musical chairs and the bonfire. Wear your red hat, as it will probably be a little bit chilly, but not close to the fire. Okay, we have an enrollment report. We have data from September as well as the end of last year. Are there any things you'd like to highlight?
Well, since the last report that we distributed, we do have a count in the pre-K program. As you recall, that figure was not included, but now we do have actual enrollment and participation, so good news.
The numbers are staying very, very strong in the kindergarten and first grade level.
They are. Hundred-plus in kindergarten and first grade, as Scott is proud to mention.
And I'm sure challenged by, and I'm sure will continue to be, as that, as that number moves. And I'm sure challenged by, and I'm sure will continue to be as that, as that number moves along, it'll be interesting to see what the next year brings.
Well, you're correct, and it certainly begs the question about student-teacher ratios in those primary grades, but we'll hear about that as we prepare budgets.
Okay, great. Any questions regarding the enrollment? Okay, any other matters that we need to consider? The bulk of our time, I think, this evening will be spent in non-public session with regard to discussions regarding the collective bargaining agreement with, as it is a, a year for renegotiating the contract with our teachers. So, with that in mind, and as, there's other personnel matters, I understand, so I would entertain a motion to go into non-public session for discussion of, of those matters, which are in accordance with RSA 91A colon 3, 2, paragraph C and E.
Somewhat.
Thanks, Chet.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Chet?
Aye.
Meg Looney Moore?
Aye.
Forrest Ransdale?
Aye.
Cliff Chase?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.